Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mayor Barry Aiken. I'd like to welcome you here to our March Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting. Appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedules to see your city leadership and government in action. When you came in the door tonight, there were two sign up sheets. The first one is, I guess you would say, just an attendance sheet if we need to get back in touch with you for any reason, if you want to record your presence here at the meeting. This is just a sign up sheet. The second sheet, which tonight we actually have in red, is our public comment sheet. If you have something to address to the board, we would ask you to sign up on that public comment form. And when we get to the public comments section of our agenda, they'll bring me that sheet. I'll recognize you, ask you to come up to the podium, and we'll listen to your comments. We will limit you to two minutes for your time to talk. That is to give everybody time to state whatever reason they might have to address the board and to allow everybody a fair time to talk to us. Again, welcome here tonight. We will start out tonight. I will open us up with a prayer, and then we will do our pledge allegiance to the flag. So if you wish to participate, I would ask you to stand at this time. Let's pray. Father, we come to you humble and thankful, Lord, for the blessings that you have given each and every one of us. Lord, for blessing our town. Lord, we pray and we ask for blessings for our state and our nation. Father, we are thankful for the time that we have all been given. And Lord, we ask tonight for your wisdom as we do this town's business. Lord, for being thankful for all that you have bestowed upon us. Again, Lord, I thank you for our families. I thank you for those that are first responders, that, Lord, are taking care of us and are watching over us. And Lord, again, I'm thankful for your blessings and all these things. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 12th. I have the time as 7:03. I would ask the town recorder, Ms. Debbie Ficker, to give us a roll call, Mr. Ficker.
All right, we have Mayor Aiken.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Renfro.
Here.
Alderman G. Nee.
Here, ma'am.
Alderman Feldmayer.
Here.
Alderman Harper.
Here.
Alderman Place. Zabson.
All right. We do have a forum to conduct business. The next thing on our agenda would be our public comment period. If somebody could check.
We have no public comment listed on the page.
All right, we have no public comments. Nobody signed up. Press on to item number four on our agenda is our consent agenda. This is a several items that the board has already been looked over as far as minutes. Sales tax report, you can see this up on your screen. We had one person one time ask us, well, how come y'all don't talk about that anymore? Please understand that the board, nothing has changed. They always, they look at the sales tax, they look at the figures, and if they ever have any questions, they're always free to pull things out of the consent agenda for more discussion. So I would entertain a motion for our consent agenda tonight.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, pulling item B, exhibit B, the financial and sales tax report to discuss.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Harper.
I'll say it.
I have a second from Alderman Feldmayer. Any discussion? We are pulling item B out. That will be under new business. Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of item B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. For old business tonight, we have our final consideration amending Title V, Chapter Four of our transient vendor ordinance. Mr. Town Administrator, do you have anything now? What's bound upon this?
Not a ton, Mr. Mayor. It's a transient ordinance, so they were passing on first consideration to allow the municipal businesses such as food trucks to apply for permits, conduct business in Atoka. Really, there's not much to it.
All right. Since this is the second consideration of the ordinance, is there any objection to reading the ordinance by title only? Hearing none, this town recorder, would you please read the ordinance by title?
All right, we have an ordinance to amend Title V, Chapter Four of the Atoka Municipal Code.
Make the motion approved. Final read.
I have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Renfro. Any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, since this is an ordinance, we'll take a roll call vote. Alderman Harper.
Yes.
Alderman Feldmayer.
Yes.
Alderman G. Nee.
Yes.
Alderman Renfro.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Ordinance passes on final consideration. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen. New business. Tell you what, let's go on and do the financial and sales tax report. Alderman Harper wanted to pull out their consent, so go ahead, Alderman Harper.
Yes, I just wanted the board, and I want to ask town staff, going over the financial this month, looking at the property tax, the report says it ends in February 29th, which is the deadline for property taxes, but it's saying that our budget is only received eighty-six point three percent of the budget, or it's basically about a $340,000 shortfall. So that's a lot of money.
I could be wrong, and I think I was once up here, but I'm not.
I don't remember.
But I believe with the assessment, the new assessment, that commercial property tax went down because they weren't included. It was only residential. Could be wrong. I don't think I have. Could be where it's at.
That'd be a good question. It's got to be different county assessor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to answer Alderman Harper's question, that is correct. It's eighty-six point three percent. We've got about a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty thousand outstanding, I think is delinquent. I believe we talked about that prior to the meeting last week, so there may be a differential there from budgeted to actuals, so that there's going to be a difference.
Well, that's good. I was looking at three forty going, that's it. So you said at least there's one seventy delinquent. We know we won't approve all of that.
Right. We try to make it as close as we can when we're doing our budget.
I mean, because normally by this time, that's at a hundred or over, you know, so.
A lot of times, you're correct.
So that's also just for the board to consider in this upcoming budget season.
Yeah, so you could take the actual number, approximate the actual number, two point three six five, and add about a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty thousand to that, and that's going to be the number that we're looking at under current assessments moving into the fiscal year 25.
Mayor, that's the only items that I had to discuss.
Do we have any other, any other questions for the town administrator or town staff as far as financials, sales tax report? All right, hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve. I have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer to accept the financial and sales tax report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Harper. Any more discussion? All in favor of accepting the February 2024 financial and sales tax report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll take that into view. All right, back to our new business item A, we have some fire and police employee recognitions. I think the word got out about that. Is that right? It's good to see a good turnout coming down.
So.
Chief, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
So for the police department this year, we're making our announcement on our Officer of the Quarter for December 2023, and then our Officer of the Year for 2023. Unfortunately, our Officer of the Quarter for December 2023 had an injury and couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to say a little few words in his absence about him and just kind of give the opportunity for us to carry that in our hearts with us. Officer Jalen Edwards has been awarded the Officer of the Quarter for December 2023. Officer Edwards, though relatively new to our department with approximately eight months of service, has already made significant impacts. While working diligently from six to two, he demonstrated a commendable work ethic and enthusiasm for his role within the department. He operates efficiently with minimal supervision, readily assisting fellow officers whenever needed, showcasing his dedication to our team and community. His commitment to upholding the law and ensuring safety to our community is evident in his actions. Officer Edwards has exemplified outstanding performance in various situations, including his involvement in resolving a complex firearm theft case in October of '23, responding to a domestic violence incident in November of '23, and swiftly addressing a shots fired call within our town in November of 2023. His proactive approach, attention to detail, and professionalism in handling these cases reflect his devotion to duty and the values of our department. His positive attitude, coupled with his willingness to go above and beyond in serving our community, truly sets him apart. It is an honor to recognize his contributions and nominate him by his supervisors for the Atoka Police Department's Officer of the Quarter for the months of October through December 2023. Now, someone who is here with us this evening, I'm going to ask her to come up first. I'm delighted to declare that Officer Lydia Hubbard is our Officer of the Year for 2023. You're going to have to turn around and face them. Officer Hubbard has made, has been an integral part of our department. Throughout her tenure, Officer Hubbard has demonstrated remarkable growth both personally and professionally. She's excelled as a patrol officer, exhibiting strong performance in felony and misdemeanor cases, as well as leading our department in DUI cases. Officer Hubbard's impact extends beyond her exemplary work on duty. She has significantly contributed to boosting morale within the shift and the department as a whole. Her involvement in community events such as our Santa Ride and officer memorials alongside initiatives like trying to start up the Citizens Police Academy showcases her unwavering dedication to serving our community. Furthermore, Officer Hubbard's compassion and selflessness shine through her interactions with the public and her colleagues. Whether it's following up on service calls, providing gifts to citizens, or celebrating her fellow officers' milestones, she consistently goes above and beyond to make a positive difference in the lives of those around her. Page two. And it's with great pride that we recognize Officer Hubbard's distinct pattern of community service, professional achievements, selflessness, and empathy. She embodies the values and spirit of our department, and we are privileged to have her as a member of our team. So I've got a few things for you.
All right, so we have a great looking, this will be good. I usually say it's on a I love me wall, but you can't put this on the wall unless you put a shelf on it. But it says, "In recognition of your outstanding dedication and commitment to serving the citizens of Atoka, Tennessee, and the Atoka Police Department, Officer of the Year Lydia E. Hubbard This is your time?
And a certificate to make it all legal.
I really appreciate y'all.
You got anybody you want to recognize, Mayor? Anybody here with you?
Yeah, I have just a few of my closest friends, everyone to the left. No, thank y'all, I can do it without you and the town for sure.
As Chief McMillan comes up here, I just wanted to, also, we're going to be doing, going into our fire department personnel that we're so proud of. You know, we started the Atoka Fire Department in 2015, which is crazy. I mean, next year will be 10 years, and I know there's a lot of people up here that remember that day when we, when we did that. We are a Class III fire department, one of only sixty-three in the entire state. That's something to be proud of. It really is, it's really awesome. And, you know, I talk to people a lot, and they're like, I mean, I ain't never had my house catch on fire, but when you tell them, yeah, but what about medical calls? What about, you know, somebody that our fire department showed up, and because of our fire department, because of our paramedics, because of our responders, they're still alive. And everybody gets that. They get that. And, you know, that's just something that we, as Atoka, have, y'all can be so proud of, that we have the talent, the skills, the people to provide that service for our community. It's just, it's just awesome. So it's my pleasure tonight to honor three of our fire department members for going above and beyond. And the first one, we're going to invite firefighter Donnie Phillips.
I don't have two pages like the chief. I've got one, but it's very small type. Bear with me, I brought my water. I want to say first that the firefighter of the year at the Atoka Fire Department is not something we take lightly. The final decision comes down to myself, but I asked the lieutenants beforehand, those are my company officers, who they would like to nominate and why. All of our employees do a wonderful job, day in and day out, and in truth, just achieving this high bar of competency we set for ourselves day in and day out is worthy of recognition in most cases. But we want to recognize those that set great examples, get their work ethics and attitudes, and many times go above and beyond expectations. Believe me when I tell you, this was not an easy decision. In fact, I have decided this year that two employees rose to the level of firefighter of the year. It's a little bit unorthodox, but we do unorthodox things now. Firefighter and advanced DMT, Donnie Phillips, started with the AFD on September 26th, 2021. According to his company officer, Chance Hall, just the fact that Donnie has to work daily with Chance is in and of itself a reason to award Donnie with the firefighter of the But in seriousness, Donnie is a great example of what we hope to see in our employees. He's almost always in a good mood and completes his tasks and daily duties without complaint. More than just being a great employee, it is evident to everyone that comes in contact with him that he truly cares about this town and department. Besides going above and beyond almost daily, in the past year, he took the reins of our reserve firefighter program as full-time director and has made many improvements in it, increasing our recruitment and reserve excitement and buy-in. Our reserve program is vitally important as we face difficulties in finding the resources for the additional firefighters we need. For this reason, and, and, for this reason and many others, I am proud as I can be to present Donnie Phillips with the 2023 firefighter of the year award. Presented to Donnie Phillips, firefighter of the year 2023.
You want to say anything? Yeah, Donnie.
Oh, I just want, the only thing I could say is I work with the best group of guys I can honestly say, hands down. If one of these guys helped me do the things that I do with this department, I wouldn't be anything else. I want to just say thank each and every one of y'all.
Thanks. And as the chief said, we also have a second firefighter of the year, and I'm going to ask firefighter Dustin Pendel to come up here. Dustin!
Firefighter and advanced DMT Dustin Pendel started his journey with the AFD on March 16th, 2020. Just like Donnie, firefighter Pendel's attitude and work ethic at the station are top shelf and something to be admired. In addition to this, I cannot overlook firefighter Pendel's contributions to the department this past year. Going back to Christmas of 2022, Dustin had a huge part in the construction of our award-winning Christmas Vacation float. He almost single-handedly built the house, just so you know. His handiness has also come to our aid in extensive renovations we did to Station Two this past year. Dustin did a lot of the work himself with help from some of our other great employees, even volunteering some of his personal time to get the project completed. This almost assuredly saved the town substantial construction costs. I am also as proud as I can be to present firefighter Dustin Pendel with the 2023 firefighter of the year award.
Thank you all. Well, I do want to personally congratulate Donnie. The task that kind of got me here were jobs that I can actually complete. Donnie's task with this firefighter, reserve, and volunteer program is a job that never gets completed. It's every single day, tons of hours off duty, so where you got the reserve program right now is the best I've ever seen it in this department, so congratulations.
Hey, Don, come on back up.
All right, a final award tonight is our actual reserve firefighter of the year. Been hearing about Dustin and Donnie talking about the reserve program, but I would like to ask firefighter Jared Baker.
Hey. I have absolutely forbade him from hugging me, just so you know. As I said before, our firefighter reserve program is equally important as our career firefighters. We not only utilize our reserves for vital manpower, but we also have an aggressive training program in place for them to hopefully give them the skills to eventually hire on with us full-time or continue their fire service careers in another department if they choose to do so. We currently have four reserve firefighters with another two sitting on deck, ready to join the team. I actually got an email on the way here tonight, and we've got another one on deck, so.
Awesome.
Another, another kudos and good job to Donnie. Which brings me to the optimistic ball of energy firefighter Jared Baker. Jared's boundless enthusiasm brings a breath of fresh air to the reserve program and department as a whole. He never complains about donning the sweatbox that is our fire pup dog suit to entertain the kids. He also has helped with some of our IT issues at the department, including helping set up our Red Team Drone Program, which was launched, pun intended, this past year. Firefighter Baker is the mission supervisor for the program. I do have two pages, chief, I lied. Great job firefighter Baker, and congratulations on being the 2023 reserve firefighter of the year.
Oh, I just, I want to thank, if it weren't for coordinator Phillips and everything he's done for us with the reserve program, we wouldn't be here, so we really appreciate that. And appreciate my family for letting me volunteer away from home.
Very much so.
And lastly, all the career firefighters who are constantly teaching us newbies is a big deal, so thank you.
We, the next thing on our agenda, I have a proclamation. Carl Perkins reached out to us. Next month, April, of course, is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and of course, by the time they have their kind of ceremony, we'll already, we won't admit. So we're doing it this month to read the proclamation. I believe most, all the municipalities around here, and you know, one of the things with the proclamation is we're just trying to bring awareness, and I'm always the stats that come out when you read some of these, but we're just trying to bring awareness to the issue. So I have a proclamation I'd like to read tonight. It says, "Whereas we need to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious and growing problem that changes lives paths, life's path, for nearly four million of our nation's children annually. And whereas this problem, which has reached epidemic proportions in all regions of our nation, respects no racial, religious, socioeconomic, or geographic boundaries, and can prevent children from following the road to a successful future. And whereas we need to take steps to educate the public on child abuse and its causes, and whereas the exchange club, Carl Per- And whereas the exchange club Carl Perkins Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse is participating in national child abuse prevention efforts through their awareness campaign with there's no place like a safe home theme. Now therefore, I Barry L. Aiken, mayor of the town of Atoka, hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 shall be observed as child abuse prevention month in the town of Atoka. And I urge all of our citizens to use this time to better understand, recognize, respond to this grievous problem as the Carl Perkins Center helps to strengthen families and prevent abuse. Now we further commend the exchange club Carl Perkins Center for the prevention of child abuse for its continued success in helping families break free from the cycle of abuse and urge full public support of their successful efforts. And if you're not familiar with the Carl Perkins Center, please go to their website. You can go visit their, 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 their hands. They've got a lot of reach in our area. And they're doing a lot of stuff. But anyway, to finish it up, in witness thereof, I have set my hand and have caused the seal of the town of Atoka to be ad fixed this 12th day of March 2024. So there we go. And we will get that too. Can you open the door, chief?
Yes, sir.
All right, next on our agenda is item seven miscellaneous items from the mayor, board of aldermen and town administrator. Let the board go first. We have some items.
I'd just like to say congratulations to the winner, but to all the employees who work hard every day and maybe not getting recognized sometimes for those unforeseen things that they do for the town.
Thank you, sir.
I have a couple items, mayor. One, did you want to speak on cops and boppers? Too early? I didn't say chief.
I can, I can speak on them if he was going to, but I certainly can. So cops and boppers will be on May 18th. We, the pond is pretty much back to normal. We're just waiting for it to fill up now. We actually had a meeting with TWRA today, so we're in the planning stages and looking for sponsors. So if anyone is interested in being a sponsor, just let me know and I can send you the sponsor form. The sponsorship money goes towards stocking the pond with as much catfish as we can. And then prizes for the kids such as sometimes we can get some bikes, some, lots of fishing poles, fishing equipment and things of that nature. I think that's all. I have a Pioneer Park, May 18th from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
The other item, I'm currently the board's liaison with the planning commission and I just want to kind of give you an update. Right now, if the, if the planning commission recommends a zoning change or changes to our, our code, those items get a recommendation from the planning commission that comes to the board for your approval. But I just want to let you know that currently the planning commission just recently updated the subdivision regulations and those, those stop at the planning commission. And they're currently discussing, this is going to be a brand new document. We currently don't have a certified list of construction standards. So right now, we've, we've been presented with a 300-page document. These construction standards are going to talk about things like, can we, can we burn the trees that we push over? What are our road bases going to be consisted of? What are our water mains going to be consisted of? Essentially all of the items that will go into a definitive list that will go to developers that you're going to do this, you're not going to do that. So I talked to town staff and just kind of confirmed because it was kind of presented to me that this item would also stop at the planning commission level. And just to kind of make you aware of it, to kind of get your thoughts, I don't know if there's anything that can be done, if the board would like to see it as well. But to let you know that the first main discussion has actually come up the floor. We're going to have kind of a work session in this coming Monday night at 6 o'clock, so.
Sounds like a question, maybe for the attorney to look into because I would like to, to look at it. We're the ones responsible to the, to the citizens and the residents, so.
Good. Any other items from the board? All right. The only thing I have is I was, I guess, privileged to attend a workshop in Jackson today representing the town. But it was about pilot program and TIFs, which the board's familiar with, as far as these are giving us some tools to hopefully bring some development to the town of Atoka. And I just got to say, I was very proud because not only have we, are we putting the pieces together, there were, there were municipalities in the room that weren't nearly as far along as we are. And y'all can take pride in that. You know, we've got great staff that are working and advising us, but then y'all have to make the decision to implement things like IDB and fund the IDB. And it was very good. Atoka even got a shout out from one of the panelists at this workshop talking about our 20-year plan, our long range, and the fact that we've already, are thinking enough ahead to have done that. So the bottom line is, thank you board because we're looking good. And there were many things to walk away from and take pride in our town and, and what's going on and how the pieces are being put in place. And I just want to let citizens know that too. This is where we get to, I get to see and talk to mayors and staff from all sorts of municipalities. And it makes you feel good when you realize, hey, you know, we, we're already, we're already ahead of some of these people. So anyway, that's all I've got. Mr. Town Administrator.
Okay, just have a few items for the board. So the first one would be, we've talked through budget discussions for FY25 about a new planning department software that would allow permits to be applied for online, payments online and those types of things and a management system for that. Is there, the, the company is cloud permitted. They have offered to delay and defer payment until July, until the new fiscal year. But we would need to execute an agreement prior to the end of this month. Is that something that the board would consider doing or not? Because if, if so, we, we could schedule a special call meeting solely for that purpose before the board, the board's budget work session at the end of the month. That would save us about $6,000 if we implemented it before the end of quarter one. I do have a request in to see if they can wait until April, but I, I thought I'd bring it up since y'all were here.
I have no issue with it, but I'd like to, you know, see the proposal.
Of course, of course. Unless you need to make a decision tonight, just, is that something that, you know, we, we could schedule a special call if they won't defer until the board's regular meeting in April?
So we could talk about this the same night we have our next budget work session?
Yeah, or if they'll defer till April, you know, be put on the April agenda. Okay.
Everybody good with town administrator proposal? Okay.
Okay, item number two. So we were able to work with T-DOT for reallocation of our awarded competitive aqua funds to be reallocated to the lagoon project. Now we've talked briefly about some of the obstacles that we've been getting from obtaining state revolving fund loan on assets that are not ours. And that is the case with the wastewater lagoon. So we worked with T-DECK and asked them if we could reallocate funds from our Main Street Kern's grant award over to the lagoon project. And it would cover our out-of-pocket cost, which is about $2.6 million. And they graciously allowed us to do that. So state water infrastructure grants allowed us to do that. I think it's important to note that no other award recipient was allowed to change their proposal. So I think that's a pretty big deal for us. And again, it covers Atoka's out-of-pocket costs for the lagoon project. And the difficulty is the lagoon does not belong to us. It's not Atoka's asset. So we were running into some obstacles in getting financing. So SRF was not comfortable with us taking out debt to cover an asset that's not ours. So basically we're taking money from our wholly owned asset project and moving it over there to cover our out-of-pocket. And it doesn't really change much. We'll still be borrowing the same amount of money to cover the other projects. So it doesn't change a lot on the finance, on the finance front. But it does address the finance difficulties that we've experienced thus far. We, we met with auditor, our CPA and, and folks from MTS. We took them into council as well. Updating on the roundabout, the three-way, we're working with T-DOT on a design revision that has been submitted and hopefully we'll hear back soon. We sent them a preliminary. They wanted to see a couple of adjustments due to traffic flow and some safety concerns that they had. Just letting you know that we're moving forward on it. I'm also proud to announce that you already know, of course, that the infrastructure planning grant award to Atoka, $448,000. We received notification of that last week. Excuse me. And that planning grant will be used to model and weigh what our wastewater infrastructure is and our water infrastructure is. So we'll be using that also as some asset management component. So a big deal for that. That's a 5% match, so not a ton of money out of pocket to us. That was a, a really good, really good news. The multimodal project, so we have several dates being circulated now for a meeting between our engineers with T-DOT. And we need to discuss the plans and the extent of the proposal and the improvements based on budget and projected costs, so lighting and design. So we're, we're moving to that next step on multimodal project. Maple and Tipton Road Bridges. So we have checked in with T-DOT. We cannot reallocate funds from the Maple Bridge project to go towards Tipton Bridge replacement. They told us that no federal funds are available for the Tipton Road Bridge project until 2034. We are still seeking clarification on the timeline and funding for the replacement of Maple Bridge. And they did acknowledge that it is part of the improved act and it is in state lawful replacement. But we all know that we're under some, some pressures to get something addressed on that sooner rather than later. And we've communicated that to them. So we've been working with Ms. Lisa on that. Walker Park Stream Mitigation Project, so as of February 26th, T-DOT was working to set up a meeting with town staff and the consultants to discuss some utility concerns. They've got some concerns of where water and sewer utilities are located within the scope area of the project. I think they were asking us to think about moving them, but it's really their project because that's remitigation project not only helps Atoka, but it also helps T-DOT in other areas where they were trying to get some credits here to help in other areas. I believe it was around Summerville. And 911 emergency services fees. So as we've talked about through our budget process, fees are expected to increase. They have not increased in the last 10 years. A one-year agreement is anticipated. Nothing final as of yet, but there's an upcoming meeting towards the end of the month with all the shareholders with the emergency services board. So that's all I got.
I did remember one thing. Many of you have received a letter talking about that we are going to implement water and sewer insurance coverage for our citizens. And that is going to be implemented in May, May 1st. And I've asked Director Wesley Yarborough to come up here. And I'm going to probably do this for this meeting, April meeting and May meeting too, probably. And if you could just give us a recap, Wesley, for those that might be watching online or the people in the, in the room that didn't know. As far as the advantages to our citizens, what does it bring to the table?
So what it brings to the table, our current leak adjustment policy only gives you one leak adjustment a year. This, this policy here gives you two leak adjustments in a 12-month calendar year. It's a great benefit for the town. It helps us, citizens and as well as the town recoup back the money that we write off, so to speak, in the water loss. And also, it's a great benefit for all consumers, for our great payers, so.
And what's the coverage for sewer and water?
Sewer is $1,000 and it's 99 cents a month and sewer, sorry, water and, I'm sorry. I get talking about. Sorry, I've had a long day. And then the water as well is $1,000 coverage for 99 cents. And same thing for the sewer as well.
So instead of just one chance a year.
Two chances.
If you were to, God forbid, have two incidences.
Yes, sir.
Now you can put in for two reimbursements.
Yes, sir.
Papa Grove people have already had this?
Yes, they've had this in place for, I think about eight or eight years, give or take.
And I know there was some.
Actually, City of Covington is looking into it as well too. Several municipalities close to us is looking at it as well too, so.
So we're excited about it. And of course, if anybody doesn't want it, they can opt out. And even if they miss all the notifications and they get their first month bill, we're going to give 90 days to opt out.
Yes, sir.
Anybody thinking, we're trying to put one over on you. It's a good thing for our citizens, I believe it is. And it's a good thing for the town.
Also, if they want to opt back in, if they've opted out, when they opt back in, it does take up to 30 days before you're, you're available to, to use it, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, it's 90 days from May 1st?
No, it was 90 days from January.
Okay.
That's when it takes.
That's confusing.
Yeah, that's where it takes.
They're within the 90 days now, so they can opt out.
They need to be opting out right now. If they don't want it, they need to be calling the number and opting out. Yes.
Yeah, opt-out period is now.
Opt-out period is going on right now, yes.
And it ends this month?
Yes.
End of March?
No.
April 6th.
April 25th. Yeah, April 25th, yeah. I'll double check.
April 25th. You want out, get out by April 25th.
Any other questions, Director? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Alderman Renfro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Didn't think you were going to have a second. I have a second, Alderman. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.